Alright, so a reminder, my button is always on. Yours, you have to press down and hold the talk. It's totally Jeff. I would like to welcome you and call this. Wednesday, September 7th, and it is 4:03 PM. And I will go ahead and do roll call here. Commissioner Crookshank. Don't believe he is here. Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Koenig.
Present.
We do not have a commissioner from FUSD yet. I am here, Julie Lee, Chair. Vice Chair Morley.
Present.
And Commissioner Kraft. Okay, I know you are present, Commissioner Kraft. I think you are on mute right now. So, welcome, everybody.
Sorry, you're very quiet. What do you want?
I was just checking to make sure you were there.
Oh, I'm here, thank you.
Excellent. Alright, so at this time, I would like to welcome any members of the public to make a public comment, to come on up and address the commission. This is for items that are not on the agenda. So if you're not here to speak to the Active Transportation Master Plan, then now is the time to come on up. So I would like to welcome Gary, former Chair of this commission. Welcome.
Thank you so much. This brings me back, I really enjoyed being on the commission. Do you have any comments? Okay, good. So, it was a delight to be on the commission. I really enjoyed it. I have a small confession to make. I was hoping to run for office again to become a judge. Well, I've now hit the point where I can't do that anymore because I'm 70. And I also, we have marriage selection. But, so I came here for one purpose, but just enjoyed my time here. So I wanted to say goodbye to everybody because I bailed when we started to go on Zoom. And it was not, the problem was not that I couldn't participate in Zoom. I couldn't run Zoom. And so, I'm so glad that you have to carry it on. I do have one kvetch. I don't, I'm not real excited about the barriers for the bike lanes. But I can live with them, in general. Particularly when you have the vertical delineators to let people know that, you know, I'm a smidge irritated every time I go down on Beaver and see them. But, I can get over that. However, I almost had a car accident. I'm going east on Butler. I'm going to go to Whole Foods. Now, that's not a full intersection there because you can't go across where that pullout is. But, there is, you've got the bike lane, then you've got an opening for someone to make a right turn in, the new bike lane, and somebody to make a right turn out. It is not intuitive that you would have the barriers right there. I almost took out the barrier. And that would scare the daylights out of me. And I consider myself a good driver. So, unless you can guarantee there will be a verbal, a vertical warning, you need to take out the bike lanes for that one little stretch there. So I think that you have to have, pretty well guarantee that, and I appreciate that the vertical delineators get wiped out as time goes on. But, it's such a small little place, maybe that's a bad place to put the bike lanes. I know you can't really respond to that because it's not on the agenda. So I have, I have had to explain that to people before. So I just wanted to give you my two cents on that. And gosh, I miss you guys. And I'll contact Jeff to find out if you really do have an opening. And do, am I qualified after spending two years off the commission? So, gosh, it's great to see you. Do you have any questions to me?
I do. I wondered if you felt differently about the barriers on Butler versus the barriers on Beaver?
Yes. Because the ones on Beaver are intuitive. And Beaver is straight. So I could look down there and I can see, bum, 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 I can see the little vertical integrators. Butler is wavy. And so I can't intuitively pick that up. I just turned 70, so, and I just, I, this, I don't know if it's an age thing or what, but I couldn't pick it up that well. So Beaver, I can live with, but Butler is much more difficult. I think it's nice to have, yep, that's a quick answer.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any other questions?
Well, you may be seeing me.
Good to see you, Gary.
Bye-bye, guys.
Alright, do we have any other members of the public that would like to address the commission for item, the item not on the agenda? Alrighty then. We do not have approval of minutes. These meetings are being recorded and are recorded. So if you have questions about what was discussed in previous meetings, that is available to you. So moving to new business. The Active Transportation Master Plan, Martin's life for the past few years, and significant work from the Bicycle Advisory Committee and Pedestrian Advisory Committees, a lot of mapping. This has been in front of the commission a couple of times now. And I think the goal is to take this in front of City Council, and welcome, Councilmember McCarthy. The goal is to take this in front of City Council in October for review. And then after that would be a regional plan amendment for adoption. So with that, I'll turn it over to Martin. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. My name is Martin Ince. I'm the Multimodal Transportation Planner for the city. And first off, let me express my gratitude to you for agreeing to meet in your off-month to, for this item and this item only, to keep it moving on its schedule. But as you mentioned, Madam Chair, we have really two items before you tonight. One is review and possible recommendation for the Active Transportation Master Plan. And the second is just review and consideration of a minor amendment to the regional plan that is being done in conjunction with the ATMP. And for that second item, we don't need a recommendation from you, but you're more than welcome to provide your comments and input. We can have discussion about it. Both of those items will go forward to the City Council. Our tentative, our date is scheduled for October 4th. Both of those items would be approved or adopted by council, I guess, by resolution. That's kind of the path forward for tonight. I want to take a few minutes and just kind of walk you through the contents of the ATMP. I don't mean this to be kind of a direct recitation of the table of contents, but I will kind of go chapter by chapter and pull out a few things that I think are worth highlighting. I want you to be able to interrupt me at any time if you have questions or comments as we go through it. So by all means, don't feel like you need to wait to the end of the presentation to make any comments. And then of course, at the end of the presentation, we'll have time for further discussion and any questions that you might have. So I guess I'll pause there and see if there are any questions or comments before I dive in.
Sounds good. And I guess commissioners that are present, just give me a look. Let me know if you have questions for Martin. And then Commissioner Kraft, if you wouldn't mind just letting me know in the chat if you do have a question for Martin, so I can pause him. And you can ask your question. Alright, thanks, Martin, go ahead.
Alright, thank you. And I think we should just verify that those who are joining online are able to see the presentation.
Commissioner Kraft, can you see Martin's screen? It's the cover page of his presentation.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you.
And we'll go forward. I introduced myself, here's my contact information. Just to start at the very beginning, that ATMP is a master plan and it's intended to serve as a guide for enhancing walking and biking in flagstaff. And over the years, the city has adopted a number of plans, beginning with the regional plan, that talk about walking and biking in general terms. None of them really provide any specifics on how we get to being a better place for walking and biking. So the ATMP is really intended to fill in those details and provide that very specific guidance for moving forward. I warned you that we were going to go through the chapters one by one. So here are the eight of them, beginning with the introduction and going all the way down through planning considerations, design guidance, and infrastructure. And we'll take them as they come. Here's the introduction. Part of it includes the, our overall intent. Part of it includes the policy context. So we're not creating this out of whole cloth. There are already existing policies for walking and biking principally in the regional plan that we're taking as a starting point and kind of adding detail to that. Other information about how the plan is to be used and how it was developed. And then the introduction closes with some guiding principles and our approach to, I don't want to be talking about biking and biking, but a little bit larger, our kind of our approach to how we do transportation planning. The approach can be summarized in the phrase we use of the big step, which really began with the Carbon Neutrality Plan and has kind of called on with other commissions and council as well. What it means is that we seek to be more transformational and incremental. So at this point, our evolution as it involves carbon neutrality in transportation, we need to take big steps. I think we're past the point where we can take baby steps. Part of the plan, emphasizing accommodation for pets and bikes as opposed to overbuilding for cars. So making sure that we have great infrastructure for walking and biking. We want to take a well-rounded approach to transportation and include a whole variety of community consideration and objectives beyond just what we think of as transportation. So that can include things like public health, economic vitality, sustainability, community character, all those sorts of things. And then finally, we want to give people a wide variety of options for mobility. So they have different legitimate choices for how they get around. And not just vehicles, not just transit, but different options for everybody depending on what they need and what's best for them at that time. And then just a bit about guiding principles. And this is really kind of a summation of what's in the actual document. But it's, the document is premised on the idea that walking and biking are important to flagstaff for a variety of reasons. I've listed a few here, including mobility, equity, public health, sustainability, the economy. Second principle is that we have a significant opportunity here to make things better for walking and biking. There's a big upside to active transportation in flagstaff. But it takes an effort on our part. It doesn't just happen automatically. It's not something that's in the water that causes us to be good for walking and biking. We have to work at it. Other communities have done this and have shown great results. And there's no reason why flagstaff can't do the same. Third principle here is that people will walk and bike when they find it to be comfortable, convenient, and useful. So again, that's part of our responsibility or the effort that we need to make for our networks. Fourth point is that walking and biking are critical parts of our transportation system. So when we think about transportation, we should think of the whole package, including walking and biking and transit as well as part of it. And then finally, I think we need to acknowledge that walking and biking don't exist just in and of themselves. They really are part of a larger context that includes land use and community character and really our overall approach to transportation. And I think if this, if this document, the ATMP, we're just talking about how do we do walking and biking better, it would be fairly straightforward and bounded. But we expanded that a little bit to cover all kinds of information about how we approach transportation and really look at it in more of a larger context. So Chapter 2 talks about current conditions. And here we have kind of a little summation, what's the current status of walking and biking in flagstaff, based on the infrastructure that we have in place or are missing, our mode share, so how many people are already walking and biking for daily trips, safety in the form of pedestrian and bike crashes. And then finally, national measures, like we, for example, are part of the Walk Friendly Communities and Bicycle Friendly Communities Program. So that gives us kind of an outside, third-party look at how we're doing beyond ourselves. That chapter closes with a list of challenges that we have for walking and biking. And this is really based on things that we've heard over the last number of years in talking to the public and doing a number of surveys. And I'm sure if you read through it, if you walk or bike, these things will not be unfamiliar to you. You will have experienced them yourselves. And then finally, we close with the opportunities, so kind of the flip side of the challenge is like what we can do. And as I mentioned before, I think there's a really big upside in flagstaff. We have a lot of things going for us. And we're actually doing really pretty well. So it's just a matter of kind of, you know, getting us across that finish line or getting us from, from being good to being excellent. And I think I showed this at the last Transportation Committee meetings, Commission meetings, so I won't dwell on that here. But it just kind of highlights the opportunity that we have. And it's kind of a juxtaposition between kind of our trend data on mode share over the last couple of years and where we might get to. And that graph on the right is from a random sample survey that was done by Metro Plan. And it shows that blue being current and red being kind of what people want in the future, it shows that they essentially want to drive less or use their car less and use transit, walking and biking more. And lo and behold, here we are to give them that opportunity. Third chapter is Goals, Policies, and Strategies. There are 13 goals listed in the document. These goals really, as I mentioned before, start with the goals that are already in the regional plan and give it more specificity or more detailed relative to walking and biking. But they don't, they don't really change anything that's in the regional plan or tread new ground that way. There are also 32 policies that are organized into those six topics. The topics being infrastructure, maintenance and operations, support and encouragement, safety, transportation and land use planning, and evaluation. And then there are, within each of those policies, there are a number of very specific steps that we can take. There's 143 total. Originally, they were in the body of the document. That was just kind of, it really killed your momentum when you were reading it because there were like nine pages of things that we can do, which is a very long list of things to accomplish. So we moved that to the end and included it as an appendix. There is a lot of good information there, so it's important to include, to give us that direction. But it says an appendix now. Chapter 4 talks about Outcomes, Indicators, and Targets. And I use kind of an example here to illustrate the difference between them. Outcomes are what we want to happen as a result of this plan or implementation of this plan. An example might be that, an outcome may be that people walk or bike more. An indicator is how we tell if that, if we're achieving that outcome or not. So in the case of our example, if walking and biking mode share is increasing, we know that people are walking and biking more. And then finally, target, targets are very specific ways to measure that and things that we're shooting for or marks that we want to hit. So for our example, we would say that walking and biking mode share increases by 50% over the next five years. So a very specific target that we want to hit. That kind of closes out that hierarchy from outcome to indicator to target. We have set target areas in three categories, mode share, safety, and recognition. And we're using three timeframes, so the present, 2022, five years from now, and 20 years from now. We attempt to be in lockstep with the Carbon Neutrality Plan in terms of these targets, but our timing is a little bit off. They're setting their targets for 2030, for example. And we've got ours set for 20 years in the future, which makes it 2042. And I've reproduced the targets from the document. So you can see here are the three categories of mode share, safety, and recognition. Here are the specific targets that we want to hit. So our walk, bike, transit, mode share for all trips, and then for work trips, ped bike fatalities, and total crashes. And I need to clarify that, to say that it's an annual, an annual number. And then finally, recognition according to our walk-friendly and bike-friendly designations. And in general terms, for mode share, we want to increase 50% over the next five years and then essentially double over the next 20 years. So we're going for all trips from 27% to 54%. And again, this is in compliance, not in compliance, but it matches what's in the Carbon Neutrality Plan. So we have similar targets. For safety, it's kind of the same numbers, but in reverse. And I don't know exactly how to express that. I think if we cut bike and ped crashes in half, that takes us from 81 to 41. But I don't know what that one is in the middle, a quarter? Or whatever it is. And for fatalities, we really don't want to have any bike or ped fatalities at all over the next 20 years. So our target is to have zero for both, both the short term and long term. And then for recognition, we're currently at bronze and silver for walk and bike. And we want to go to gold and ultimately to platinum. Although I did see recently that I think it's the Bike Friendly Communities Program introduced a new category of diamond. So we may have to readjust our sights. I'm not sure exactly what that means yet. Chapter 5 talks about implementation. So how we actually, what are our opportunities to actually make the plan happen? We list 13 priority actions. So I mentioned before that we have 143 different strategies. So this is pulling the 13 strategies out that we feel are most important, that we should begin working on as soon as possible. It also talks generally about what are our other opportunities for implementation and includes anything from finding additional financing through grants to working with our partner agencies to kind of cover the whole range of things that we should be on the lookout for as they come along. And then finally, it talks a little bit about resources at the end. And this is a very ambitious plan. And I think we have to be realistic about, you know, kind of where we are now in terms of our resources to implement it. So here are the priority actions. We've broken them into two categories. So one is what we should start working on the first year. So, you know, really if it gets adopted by the City Council, what we do on October 4th, what we start working on in the morning of October 5th. And those include building the bike and ped projects that we have funding for and have identified as priorities. Exploring grants and other funding opportunities. And I'll have a little bit more about that in just a slide or two. Exploring options for a transportation planning process that kind of is a new way of how we look at everything from, you know, transportation projects to bigger transportation plans, to make sure that there's, we're kind of going through a formal process and making it all-encompassing and covering a variety of different topics and community interests as we do transportation planning. And then finally, the last is a review of our current regulations that principally involves the zoning code and the engineering standards. And the review would look at places where we have opportunities to enhance walking and biking or ped and bike accommodation and where the, some places where the existing documents may have to be adjusted to make them more effective. The second category is the first five years. So again, the first one is what we should do immediately. And this is what we should start or at least work on over the next couple of coming years. They include bike parking, maintenance, and snow removal. Really, that's just kind of looking at the city's practices and seeing if we can gain some efficiencies or do something better regarding maintenance and snow removal on ped and bike facilities. Third is closures and detours, providing updated or better walking and biking information. The fifth one there really addresses our resources. And it gives us a couple of different options for including, sorry, enhancing what resources we have dedicated to ped and bike. And it could be anything from, you know, looking at interns to finding more financing to hiring additional staff people. Next one in the next column over is establishing a city or regional safety panel. This is a way of looking at crash data and making it, making sure that we're using it effectively, that it actually means something as we collect it. Reestablish a safe routes to school program formerly operated by Coconino County. Second to the last one there is to explore options for a travel demand management program. Travel demand management, sometimes called transportation demand management, is simply kind of a supply and demand approach to managing travel. And its basic premise is that we're looking to reduce the demand for single-occupant vehicle travel and increase the demand or increase the capacity for active modes, including walking, biking, and transit. And there are some other nuances in there as well. Like in addition to decreasing the demand for a single occupancy vehicle, we can also distribute it better in time and space to kind of even out where we have bottlenecks or where we have congestion. And it kind of exists at two different levels. One is as an overall philosophy, this is how we approach transportation. At the other level, it's much more practical. And it's kind of a list of programs or activities or strategies that communities do to meet that overall principle. And then the final action would be to adopt formal policies at the City Council level in support of complete streets or the principles of Vision Zero. So just a little bit, a couple of thoughts about implementation. The first one there is that we have identified and really rely heavily on city capital projects and private development projects to build a lot of bike and ped infrastructure. And I think that that gives us a lot of great opportunities. We've built a lot of things in the past through those sources, but we need to be realistic about how much they can build. In the past, we've built things like sidewalks and bike lanes and footstrails principally. But we're introducing a whole new level of accommodation for ped and bikes, including underpasses and overpasses, different kinds of bikeways, footstrails that look different than the ones we've built before. And we may have additional challenges in how we require that of private development. We just, there's still that opportunity, but I think we need to be mindful of what's realistic and what we can legally ask for. Second point there is the new federal infrastructure law, which has the snappy acronym of IIJA. I think Sony may have to help you with that. Infrastructure and Investment Jobs Act? Is that it? Something like that. Anyway, it has a lot of different grant opportunities that we're just, that are already rolling out and that we're just beginning to understand. And so we have to kind of match what projects we have with the grant funding that's available. And I think we're going to have a lot of opportunities over the coming years and kind of a necessity to take advantage of that. And finally, I mentioned a little bit before, but it's a very ambitious plan. And we really have more to do than we have resources available. So we have to be kind of clever and strategic and think of ways to increase our capacity for doing some of the things that we want. And be realistic about, with the public and with the council and ourselves about how much we can do and what we can take on and how we need to prioritize that. and how we need to prioritize that. So this is a busy slide, but it's chap it it covers chapter six, which are planning considerations, and it it divides planning considerations into two categories. The first one being transportation planning, and the second one is land use and urban form. Really, this this relates back to what I said before about how walking and biking exists within the larger within larger contexts. And this really chapter this chapter really discusses how walking and biking fit into our overall approach to transportation and then how walking and biking are impacted by things like land use and urban form. On the topic of urban form, you can see some of the things that are addressed in the document from land use, urban design, place making, connectivity, parking, area types and activity centers in the NAU campus. Many of these things are already addressed in the regional plan. We just want to make sure that we're very specific about how that affects walking and biking, because again, there's there's some general ideas in the regional plan, but we want to make sure that we have the the details for it. On the transportation planning side, we talk a little bit more about travel demand management, how to approach traffic and congestion, other approaches to transportation that that we read about and hear about occasionally, including complete streets and context sensitive solutions, among others, principles of universal design and accessibility, equity, role of transit, and finally, the opportunities that that we're starting to see with micro mobility. Chapter seven talks about design guidance, and here are the kind of the subheadings, including streets, ped facilities, bike facilities, trails, crossings. And then there's a section about maintenance and operation that it doesn't go into a lot of detail, but it kind of it kind of sets us up to consider that more carefully and gives us a few ideas about where to start. And then finally, the last chapter is is infrastructure recommendations. And here we get into kind of the meat of of what we want to build. They're prioritized, and it covers five general topics, including sidewalks, at grade crossings, grade separated crossings, bikeways, and then footstrails. And I'm just going to talk a little bit about a few aspects of ped and bike infrastructure. As as I mentioned, there's a there's a long list of projects. They've been prioritized. The ATMP goes through the process of prioritizing those projects and then kind of stops there, but it sets the city up to use that prioritized list to fill out the 20-year program of projects using money from the Prop 419 transportation sales tax and from Mountain Line's first mile, last mile grant. So using those priorities, we can identify which projects will fit into that 20 years. And more immediately, we can use it to populate the city's five-year capital planning process. So it helps us decide what we what we should be building next year, the year after, the year after that. Those we don't get into into a whole lot of detail in the document itself, but those are really those are really kind of set up by the document. And I think that process is going to start here before too long, so we'll be able to use that information to go through the city's capital planning process. I think at the last the August meeting, we talked more about a little bit about bikeways. I won't spend a whole lot of time here, but it introduces a a whole system of bikeways that go beyond just having footstrails and bike lanes. They're really intended to be low stress for everybody who wants to ride a bike, who may not be comfortable in traffic. We've organized them into a hierarchy, so we know that the primary ones will be the most important and the highest priority. They're comprised of a variety of facilities. So as I mentioned, in the old days, we used footstrails and bike lanes, and that was that was kind of our go-to. And now there's all kinds of different innovative facilities that different communities use. Some are more well-suited for different circumstances. We will make sure that we identify what those are and and make sure that they're they're used appropriately and in in the right place. The whole thing has to kind of work together as a as a system. We want to focus on corridor planning. So if we have a bikeway that goes, say, from the Presidio into NAU, we want to make sure that that we've planned carefully for every kind of part of that corridor, so it it is cohesive and and a bicyclist who is on it never feels like they're left hanging or that there's a, you know, a gap in that in that network. And I think that in that way, and then we and then we those different corridors add up to an overall network. And I think at at that point, if we're able to plan that successfully, then the the sum of the whole thing becomes greater than the individual parts. So the whole thing, as it says here, kind of works together as a comprehensive system and makes it easier for people to use and navigate. Part of that is is using signing and branding and wayfinding to make it a cohesive system. And then I think we talked about it before, but the whole thing is intended to appeal to that part of the population that we refer to as interested but concerned, who really aren't comfortable on busy roads unless they have good facilities. And then I think I showed these maps last time of the this is the hierarchy, this is the facilities, and then this is the this is the version of the facilities, but only if we look at the primary network. So these are the ones that we need to focus on and make sure that they're connected and cohesive. And I I think the the question was raised last time, the last meeting when we made this presentation about, and the example was given of Butler Avenue. And if we have the barriers or the separated bike lanes for part of it, and then, you know, you you go east of Sawmill, and there really are only standard bike lanes, like how do we accommodate? How do we make that all work together? And I think the answer is that goes back to planning that facility as a corridor and making sure that we have decent facilities the whole way, so a bicyclist is never never feels like they're like the facility's ended. When I look at Butler east of Sawmill, probably just the bike lanes alone are not sufficient to make kind of give people that feeling. Buffered bike lanes is something that we've thought about as being something that is relatively easy and inexpensive to implement, and that may make make people feel better about that whole corridor instead of going from having really good facilities to having almost no facilities along that. So I'll I'll stop. I I think I think, Joe, that was one of your questions from Commissioner Conning. That was one of your questions from last time. Does that does that help answer it?
Thanks. You know, I think it helps a little bit. It what comes down to though really is the rate at which we can implement these things compared to how long it'll take in the priorities. And so some of those things are nice to haves, and I think probably won't be in the top priorities compared to just getting new trails or miles out there.
Yeah, I think that I think that's a good point. There is a a good question about how we're able to implement these things over time, even over the next couple of years. And in the bikeways part, it talks about our intent for the next few years is is to try to complete as as many missing gaps along those corridors as possible, even if it's not the an ultimate or an ideal facility, to have something there to make that corridor work altogether. And so we'll do whatever we can and and just try to close as many gaps as we can. And hopefully, if most of it is done, the the parts that are left undone are that are less than ideal will matter less overall than if than if we hadn't done something for the rest of the corridor. A little bit about footstrails. We have 59 miles existing and another 76 miles planned. In the document, we talk about facilities that go beyond kind of our traditional footstrails. They include a handful of improvements and enhancements to existing trails, access points between the community and the national forest around us, trailheads and trail hubs that that serve both the foot system and and other recreational trails, single track access trails, which give us connect connectivity between foots and other recreational trails, connections to outline communities. So we have opportunities or options to go all the way out to to places like Doni Park and Belmont and Mount Air. And then finally, greenways along footstrails to kind of enhance that experience. So if we look at a map, here's the the more traditional map of existing and planned footstrails. And then if we kind of if we expand that to include the other facilities, this is difficult to read, but I I hope that the idea gets across that that it looks to be more comprehensive in in the way that it connects the footstrail to open space, to regional recreational single track trails and to other recreational facilities as an overall system. I talked a little bit about the process and the next steps. On September 1st, which was last Thursday, we presented to the a combined meeting of the pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee. At the conclusion of their meeting, then they both made separate recommendations to approve the ATMP to the Transportation Commission. September 7th, we are here before you tonight. Again, at at the conclusion of our discussion, we'll be looking for a recommendation to city council, who is scheduled to meet on October 4th. Our next item on the agenda is the minor amendment, and that follows a similar process, but it will go to Planning and Zoning Commission on September 14th and then to the same city council meeting on October 4th. And there's the a link to the to the page on the city's website. So I'm sure that concludes my presentation, but I stand happy to answer any questions or hear any comments.
Thank you, Martin. Commissioners, who would like to start?
I could start.
All right. Please go ahead, Commissioner Coning.
Thank you very much, Martin, for that presentation. I have a range of comments and questions, and I realize at this stage of the process, you know, not a lot can be changed. But one of my questions was, how does this get updated in the future? Is this, you know, the sort of thing where every five years we there's a plan to add an amendment to it, or is it good for the next 20 years and then 10 years out, you start making the next one?
Commissioner, I think generally, when we we adopt master plans, we think of them as having a a shelf life of five years. So ideally, we'd look at updating it after five years. However, I think there are components of it that could be looked at more frequently than that. And I I think that they are specifically the list of infrastructure projects and their priorities could be reviewed almost annually as as part of the CIP process to make sure that they're still relevant, that things haven't changed, that the priorities are are still valid. And then the other part of it is the list of of 13 priority actions, which I I think, you know, after a year, it may be not enough may have happened to to warrant looking at them again. But within a couple of years, I think we have to look at them again to make sure that, you know, see what we've done, what we've already accomplished, what we had identified before, to see if there's anything new that that might be done if conditions have changed or if other things have have come up. And just just kind of a general review to make sure that that list is still valid and workable.
I I can keep going, I guess.
I have a list, too. We could just take turns if you'd like, or you can go through your list.
Why don't you jump in, Julie?
Okay, we'll take turns. I would love to hear some of the discussion at the PAC and PAC, the combined meeting last week, some of the just high-level or key takeaways that you heard at that meeting, Martin. And I heard you say that they, you know, made the recommendation to to us to to move forward, but I'd like to get a little bit more from you and perhaps Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, they they did not have a lot of discussion about it. I mean, they've been discussing it for so long, I think it was it was kind of the final step. I said I'd I'd go back to my notes and kind of pull up some of the highlights. I apologize.
No, that's okay. Thanks, Martin. Was there anything? Okay. Right. Back to you, Commissioner.
So one of my my next question is, does this document help prioritize bike and ped infrastructure and large developments, like say, Timber Sky Canyon, Morio? These are developments that might take 20 years to come to fruition, and oftentimes, bike and ped can be one of the last things to be done. Now, as they were being built, it was prioritized earlier on in the process.
Commissioner, you're referring to kind of how the timing works? So like if if let's say a footstrail was part of the development, they build a third of it the first day and the rest of it come until 20 years later about accelerating some of that?
Correct. Yeah, so they put some in, then wait to end up with the last bit, and then it'd be the first way to say, hey, you've got to put it in early on or have it completed by the midpoint or something.
Yeah. I think generally that that the the way the timing works is is based on two factors. And one one is related to the traffic impact study or transportation impact study that developments do. And so if that document shows a need for different facilities, and it could include ped and bike facilities at some point in the development, then usually the agreement with the developer is that they build it at that point. So when they're needed, they're built based on that document. The other way it gets done is really by negotiation, I think, and and what they're willing to do. Of course, like with a footstrail or sidewalks or bike lanes, they really don't work until they're connected, right? Like, it it doesn't do much good to have a part of it. So we like to get as much of it done with early phases of the development as possible. But we have to kind of balance that against the the developer's rights and what it costs them to do to do the whole thing at once. So I I don't think that this will this may give us additional leverage in the in that discussion, but only leverage, really. Nothing definitive that would require something different.
Okay. Yeah, I guess having a having this document should, like you said, provide additional leverage. Great. Thanks.
All right. Actually, Commissioner Kraft has a couple of questions. Go ahead.
Hi, Martin. I'm just trying to make sure I understand what all this is. Since a master plan doesn't have a schedule and a budget, it's just hoping for what we might have in the future and keeping that vision out there so that we can eventually make it happen. Is that close?
Yes, and it it helps us prioritize the things that we should we should do first and gives us, I I think, additional information or the ability to to find the resources to implement it.
Okay, and I'm just looking at the documents you sent a little while back, which I haven't had time to read, but I've skimmed them, and it's kind of overwhelming. There's a lot of material there. So one is the master plan, one is 6726 something or other amendment. So that's the amendment. And the the last one says ATMP IDS narrative. What is that?
So the the first two documents that that you referenced are the are the two primary documents that we're reviewing tonight. And then the other information is is just really context or background.
So IDS is the background?
Yes.
Okay.
That's really that's kind that's a history of or a summation of of the internal review process that the minor amendment went through to before it got to you.
And you were saying a minute ago that five years is the life, meaning you you would expect to revisit and revise this whole thing in five years?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Hopefully, that would be that would be more of a an adjustment or an amendment rather than starting from scratch.
All right. Yeah, I'm just trying to digest. I mean, we're reviewing this, but we're reviewing a summary that you're giving about a, you know, something like 100 and something pages, which we probably haven't read in detail. And the hope is that we're going to recommend this document to city council?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I mean, I feel like I need more time with it and need more in-depth sense of it. I know we've received these in advance, but I still, as volunteer commissioners, it's hard to get through this much material. I mean, do you have a way of convincing me that this this is something we should send on to council tonight? I know that's not a nice thing to ask, but I'm.
Perhaps I can perhaps I can help with that question. So it has gone through the vetting process for the past couple of years with the PAC and BAC. And I know it came before Transportation Commission in pre-draft or first draft form a little while ago, and then there have been some modifications. But I think, you know, Nick or Commissioner Kraft, if there's one thing to focus on, I think it would be the goals and policies, which are summarized pretty nicely in the last three pages. And so if we wanted to focus on one per And so if we wanted to focus on one particular piece of the ATMP, it, it might be helpful to, to take a look at those last three pages, where, you know, the, the document itself is, is full of references and justification for promoting bike, you know, cycling and walking and taking transit in our community. And I think that's a pretty easy sell to everybody, that those are, it's good to provide options for folks and different types of infrastructure for, for serving those needs. Really what it comes down to is those, those goals and policies, because those goals and policies are what will be used to guide development as we move forward. And I know Vice Chair Morley, I think you had a, you had a comment as well, but you, go ahead, if you have some more thoughts on that.
Oh, I was going to weigh in, too. I've had the fortune of sitting on this commission for a while and working with Martin at the staff level on this planning process, and so feel pretty familiar with the plan. I know that there are compromises that have been made to get to where we are, but I think that that's okay. I think, as a personal opinion, I'd love to see even more in the plan, but I know I've been told to temper my expectations of implementation already tonight by Martin. So I think this is a great first step. And in five years, if we've completed a ton of things on the list, then we can move on to the next set of things. Are we doing comments or at this point, or just questions?
I think questions. I'll do a call for public comment, and then we can go through, through comments.
Great. Yes, I just wanted to provide that background for Commissioner Kraft as well.
Okay. And Commissioner Kraft, other questions that you might have?
I think that was enough. Thank you.
Well, if you think of more, let me know. All right. Commissioner Koenig, go ahead.
So is there a, incorporate in there, into this plan, is there some sort of an outreach plan that's ongoing to both stay engaged as well as gain feedback from the community? You know, 50% improvement in bike and, bicycle pedestrian is pretty significant. And, you know, some infrastructure will help that, but it seems like there's also some element of cajoling in there as well.
Yes, the, there, some of the recommendations or the, or the policies or strategies in the plan, in the last section on evaluation, talk about increasing opportunities for people to provide feedback. So that's kind of in a, in a general sense. So if, if a member of the public has a, a random comment about pedestrian or bicycle accommodation, our goal would be to give them opportunities to make those comments in, in a meaningful way. And that, and that could be at any time and just kind of ongoing. Like, we, we want to be able to hear from the public. And that could get more specific as well. For example, do we have a way that people can report problems along foot trails, or problems with bike lanes, or problems on sidewalks that need to be addressed through maintenance or snow removal or, or whatever? So that's kind of the ongoing part of it. And then I think another part of it is, as we implement the plan, and this is really just the start, this is just kind of the list of things that we want to do. So as we start on those, on those four things that we want to do in the first year, for example, I think that will build public engagement into that in, in different ways. So for example, I mentioned that we do the, the city's five-year capital plan every, every year. We can do our best to include public, public engagement as, as part of that on a, on an annual basis. So we're reviewing what projects we want to build for the next year, and for the year after that, and for the next five years. And that seems like a fair opportunity for the public to weigh in, to, to see if they agree with our recommendations or not. And then some of the other things that, that we intend to work on, I, I think will all come with a public engagement component, but we have to devise what that looks like or how that works, or what opportunities we give people as, as we get into that process.
Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. I've got kind of just a general question about the plan and how it will affect some fundamental things, like after approval, it gets, it's going to have effect on capital improvements projects, and public works, and development process, and, and those things. Can you just kind of briefly talk about what that process looks like from approval to the point where they, you know, start to affect in, affect the development process, building, capital improvements, and, and those sorts of things?
Yeah, so the, so we included a, a long list of, of ped and bike projects. Some of those are, are to be built as capital projects, so that, that's what, where the information that we provided in, in this document gets used in the city's capital planning. So every, every year, we identify projects for the next five years. So that's how we identify and, and implement the projects that were, we, the city are responsible to build as capital projects. There's another handful of projects that are, are identified as, as being part of future development. And identifying them in this plan gives us leverage, but not always the, it doesn't always make it a requirement of, of private development. Some things it does, like I, I mentioned before, that there, in the city zoning code or the engineering standards, there, there's a requirement of new development to complete public improvements where they're missing, and that includes things like bike lanes and sidewalks and foot trails. So those things we can expect to happen as part of development. Some things we, we may not be able to. For example, if we show pedestrian underpass, or a foots underpasses as, as part of a project, that may not directly relate to the project itself, or the project itself may not be creating an entire demand for that facility. And, and so it would be unfair of the city to require the development to build that as part of its project, when only a portion of that project is attributable to the development. Does that make sense? And so in, in those cases, it's a little bit less clear. We don't have, we don't have the ability to, to do that altogether. We can certainly work with the development. You know, in some cases, it, it may be a question of bringing additional funding. If there's an opportunity to, to build something as part of a development, that the development doesn't have to pay for all on its own, maybe the city brings some, and, and we make it happen through kind of a partnership. So that's how it would work for development. I, I think there are still some questions about how that, how that it's ultimately going to work out. But the requirements in the zoning code or the engineering standards for public improvements would still apply. In the, in the case of, of bike lanes, if we're requiring something a little bit different than what we've asked for before, we may be able to do that, as, as long as it's a negligible cost or, or no difference to the development. Beyond that, where we make recommendations for how things look, or, or how things ought to be designed, the document itself doesn't really give any teeth to make sure that happens. We have to follow up with changes to either the zoning code or the engineering standards to include different design standards. And some things we're beginning to work on already regarding new bike facilities that we're starting to use. Other things we'll have to work on as, as they come. And once they become part of the zoning code or the engineering standards, then, then they are, you know, regulatory, they, they do become part of, of how things need to look. And did, did I answer all the parts of your question?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Councilmember McCarthy, come on up.
May I share with you, Martin?
Yes.
So this discussion about, does this document have teeth? That kind of reminds me of a discussion I just heard. From 1:00 to 3:30, I was in a meeting with state legislators, and one of the, we were talking about housing issues. And the issue came up of, well, the housing plan, does it have any teeth? And same kind of thing. It's a city council-approved plan. And one of the developers made the comment that ever since the city council has passed the housing plan, that staff has taken these, these goals way more seriously, and it's actually made a difference. So again, technically, the answer is no, it doesn't have any teeth. But in practice, I, it does. It, it will get things done. It'll motivate staff to do things that city council and this commission are suggesting that be done. I hope that helps.
Thank you. So it's always helpful to me to kind of walk through an example. So this is, this is a question, or I'm going to get to the question here in a moment. So I'm thinking about upcoming projects. Upcoming projects that need to be rezoned, or go through a minor regional plan or a major regional plan amendment. So one that comes to mind is the Northern Arizona Healthcare Project. Another one that comes to mind is Juniper Point. So I'm thinking about the ATMP moving forward, and adopted by council, and then it becomes, made part of the, the regional plan. And then on the heels of that, you have an NAH development. So the, the NAH development is, you know, the hospital is relocating just north of Fort Tuthill, in Greenfield Development, and planning to relocate their entire facility to that location, as well as having a research and development, perhaps hospitality, I'm not sure of all the details. I am not a consultant for that, for that project, just full disclosure. So as they move through this process, and they are looking at, you know, transportation, transportation, and the process for that is development of a TIA, Transportation Impact Analysis. And that's based on something like level of service. And this is a, this is an enormous project. I think if I remember correctly, you know, they're anticipating just on Beulah, when it's fully built out, to have the same number of vehicles on Beulah, that would be what we experience now between, on Milton, between Route 66 and Butler, in general. Just to put it into context is, is kind of my understanding. And I looked to Jeff to kind of confirm if I've, if I'm in the ballpark there with those, those figures. And I guess I am. Yes, I am. Okay, so that, that is a huge volume of traffic. So in the ATMP, we are talking about making this big shift. How does that apply to a project like NAH? And what they're trying to do? I mean, how do we, how would we take these goals and policies? Let's say they are adopted right now, and, and run this through? How, what things would that influence in that particular development? And again, this is a hypothetical, but it really just helps me in having this conversation to understand the implementation piece.
I, I think in a, in a general sense, that eventually we would have more opportunities to use other, other ways to help mitigate traffic, or the, really the, the demand for travel or transportation. So if we think about travel more, or more globally, like if we think about the impacts of NAH on traffic in terms of how many vehicle trips is it producing, that, that gives us kind of one, one set of answers, or one direction to go. If we think of the impacts of NAH in, in terms of travel or people moving more generally, rather than just vehicles moving, then that gives us different options for meeting that demand. In the second case, in the, in the first case, we look at, at what does a roadway look like? Where do we need turn lanes? How many lanes do we need? That sort of thing. In the second case, we can look at, at what role transit plays, or if there's a really good foot trail that connects out to it, how many people will be likely to walk or ride their bike to it? So it gives us more options in dealing with their, with a, a development of, of that size, and the impact that they have on travel in that area. The question becomes, and I, I don't know that we're going to, that we have an answer for this tonight, but the question is, do we have the tools or the information, or the regulations or the requirements in place to make that part of NAH, or, or some of these developments that are coming up? Or do we need, still need to do work to develop those tools or those requirements or those regulations to allow that to be implemented? And the answer might be some of, some of both. Like, we might be able to do some things as a result of the, the goals and policies in the ATMP, other things we may not be able to require or to impose, because we don't have that, that information or that regulatory framework in place.
Yeah, and I see that Sarah Decter has joined us this evening and might have some, some comments to add to. Thanks, Martin. So Sarah, welcome. Would you mind introducing yourself to everybody?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Le, President Lee. My name is Sarah Decter. I'm the comprehensive and neighborhood planning manager for the city of Flagstaff. We have not gotten to the presentation where I would go over this in more detail yet, but I want to make a clarification. The active transportation master plan is not being adopted in a way that would directly apply it to development applications. It is a city policy in the way that it is being brought forward, but what we are going to talk about next is the minor amendment to the regional plan, which will include language added to the regional plan and maps added to the regional plan that can influence discretionary decisions. However, what Martin said is true, that by right and entitled development, or development that has already been through the entitlement process or started it, like NAH, and some of the other applications that are currently being reviewed by the inter-division staff team, they need the language that's in the master plan and in other sources to become city code and regulations to be applicable. So the minor plan amendment will apply to discretionary decisions. The ATMP will help guide those future code changes with more detail, but there will be a lag always between the adoption of a master plan and the adoption of code that implements a master plan. Does that answer your question directly?
Yeah, thanks, Sarah. I'm thinking about the pyramid, the hierarchy, you know, that we see regularly. It's in the regional plan, you know, starting at the top with the, you know, goals and policies, and then codes, and then engineering standards at the bottom of the process.
We need to get to the bottom of it.
Yeah, we need to get to the bottom of it. All right, so other, other questions? And I could spend a lot, lot of time talking about that particular scenario and, and kind of application, but now's not the time. Any other questions from commissioners? All right.
Yeah, one from Nick.
Okay, Nick, please go ahead.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. This is the active transportation master plan. Is there an overall transportation master plan within the city that this is a part of? I'm just curious.
There is, there is not currently a, a transportation plan. There is a, Chapter 10 of the regional plan is devoted to transportation, but it is, again, it is, it is fairly general and high-level and aspirational.
And there's the metro plan that's like an outside organization?
Yes, and, and Metro Plan has a regional transportation plan, which, Jeff, I'll look, I'll look to you for help. Has the city adopted that plan as its own, or is that, just provide guidance for us?
No, the, the city, that's loud. The city does not adopt the metro plan, regional transportation plan. So the other, quick answer is no, the city doesn't have a master plan.
Okay, thanks.
I thought they did. Good question. All right. Any other questions? No? All right. Do we have any members of the public that would like to address the, the commission on this particular item? Now would be the time. Hearing and seeing none, so let's do, let's do comments. Would you like to start, Commissioner Morley? Vice Chair Morley, excuse me?
Sure. Well, as I said before, I've been able to work with this plan for a long time. I'm really excited to see it in front of us today. I think one thing that was left out of the presentation, Martin, is the amount of public input on this plan, and I would bet that it probably has more public input than any plan the city has ever done before. And so I feel really good about that. And I'm looking, the city here in front of us has the mission to protect and enhance the quality of life for all, and I really can't think of anything the city's done recently that might have more of an impact on its mission than adopt and then implement the items in this plan. So I'm obviously very supportive, and when we get there, I would be happy to make a motion.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other thoughts or comments on moving forward? Commissioner Hanson?
So this, this, preparing for this meeting was the first time I, I took a look at this, so I didn't have the experience that some other folks do. But I thought it was... So I didn't have the experience that some other folks do, but I thought it was put together well. I thought the reasoning was all there and I thought just kind of overall when I was reading it that it definitely reflected at least what, you know, I understand a lot of people on Flagstaff want and appreciate and value as far as transportation. So I thought it did a good job of capturing, again, kind of what my understanding of, of, you know, people's wants and desires are. So thank you for, for presenting to us this afternoon.
Fresh perspective is very important. Commissioner Kraft, other comments or thoughts that you'd like to share at this time?
Well, I'm, I mean, I'm probably at fault for whatever I'm about to say, but I, I, I still feel like there's too much here. It's very, very long and I'd like more time with it before deciding on anything because it's, even just reading the goals would take a while. I have found them. But yeah, to whatever degree this was clear before we had this meeting, I didn't get it that that's what we were looking at and that's what we were doing. And I, I don't think I would have had time to read even a quarter of it in the time provided. So I don't know if we need to know it well in order to, you know, recommend it, but I feel like I don't know it at all. And the presentation was brief and didn't get me the information I needed. So I don't know. I feel as though I can't in good conscience recommend it without knowing what it is. So I would like more time.
Fair comment. Commissioner Koenig?
Yeah, I guess I, Commissioner, I can't read your last name.
Kraft?
Yeah, Commissioner Kraft, respond to some of your comments in some ways. I guess I've had the fortune that I've attended a bunch of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee meetings over the years and I've seen the amount of detail they went through to try and craft this and the amount of input they got and the amount of time spent putting together. I'll admit, I've not read all 103 pages of this start to finish, but you know, my support of something like this is also considering its overall impact and scope. And, you know, we're not saying that we agree that every single thing here should be done, but you know, overall, this is a great place to start. We need, we've needed this for a long time. There will be continued public comment on the implementation of this and anything that gets built out of this and all the decisions that get made out of that. And so by no means this is a final word, but I'm excited to have this hopefully submitted and adopted by council in order to sort of keep moving forward on these infrastructure and, yeah, on these infrastructure things.
What will the public input process be once this goes to, to council? Martin, is there another opportunity? And I'm not talking necessarily about the, the commission, but as individuals, is there opportunity to provide additional comment at this time or after this time?
Chair Lead, there, there is. It is similar to any, any council meeting. Additionally, for the minor plan amendment, it is a public hearing. So they will make a formal call to the public and it has been advertised in the paper and met the requirements for a public hearing. But other than that, yes, the, the same as, as any council meeting, an opportunity for residents or individuals to provide their comments.
Okay. Thank you. So a couple of things to you. I, I know the, the amount of work or I, maybe I don't know, but I, it has been a tremendous amount of work on your part and others to put this together. And I know you've had many discussions at the PAC and BAC. I appreciate your patience in fostering those discussions. I love the mapping exercises. I love the, being able to go online and it's, it's interactive about infill pieces, missing pieces and just that priority and the hierarchy. I think that's a fantastic tool for folks because I, I do agree with, with Commissioner Kraft in that it is a lot of material to digest. So for ha, having information that's in that map format, that's interactive for the public, I think is very important. And a lot of work has gone into that. One thing I would add, I noticed that they, well, I saw in this updated version that you have costs in the document related to priorities, full build out or, you know, the priority one, I think is what it is. And I get a little nervous about including costs in a document that may be static and just with the volatility of construction costs. Like how would that information be used? So maybe just something to think about if there's a way to qualitatively or refer folks if there's a, a cost exercise related to transportation funding or capital programming, there's a way to have that online that's updated very regularly and perhaps not include that level of detail in the ATMP. Just an opinion, but I'm fine if you do. I think it's really important to get to the, to the bottom of the period, pyramid as quickly as possible. And this is engineering standards. This is the implementation piece because what's been happening is that capital projects are coming in front of council and there are policy discussions that are happening about engineering design criteria. And that's a very difficult place to be having detailed engineering design criteria conversations. So the sooner that we can get to that point in the implementation so that there is an understanding and it's tied to the standards and the codes, you know, and going through that process, the better it will be for capital improvements in their program. And as we, as a commission, look at the five-year capital plan and, you know, get the opportunity to say, hey, you know, we really like the priorities of these projects and want to talk about these projects as well, that, that we have that, that base. And I, I believe that is, that is it for my comments. I am in support of moving it forward. I know I'll call for a motion. And Commissioner Kraft, I understand you would like a little bit more time with it. We're gonna call for a, a motion and a vote on it. And I understand where you're coming from in your position and I appreciate that there is the opportunity as an individual in moving forward, should you have comment when you have more time to review the goals and policies in the document, that, that door is open to, to city council for you and to staff to provide those comments. And I'm happy to hear those as well in a future commission meeting. That is all I have. Commissioner Morley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is my honor to make a motion to recommend the ATMP for approval to council.
Do I have a second?
I'm happy to second that motion.
All right. Motion by Vice Chair Morley, second by Commissioner Koenig. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
All right. Do you have that for the record, Martin and Jeff?
I do.
All right. Motion carries and noted. Thank you very much. All right. Moving forward to the next agenda item. And I believe we will be welcoming Sarah Decter to present, is that right? Sarah, are you presenting this next item? If so, I was gonna welcome you and thank you for being here.
Hello, can you hear me?
I sure can. All right. Welcome, Sarah. So we're looking forward to talking about the minor amendment to the regional plan in support of the Active Transportation Master Plan. Go right ahead and I'll let you know when we can see a screen. I can see your screen. Oh, yes, I can see your screen.
All right. Excellent. Jeff is gonna be sharing his screen for me because we've gone late enough, I've had to move to my phone. So I do not see the screen yet. I just see Jeff's desktop.
How about now?
Yes, now I'm seeing his, the presentation. So, good evening, members of the Transportation Commission. This item is for your discussion only. As Martin said earlier, there is a minor amendment being proposed at the same time, concurrent to the Active Transportation Master Plan for the Flagstaff Regional Plan. These are not a minor plan amendment and a specific plan. As you may see, a master plan has a separate process for adoption. So we're gonna talk about that a little bit. So Jeff, next slide. So this amendment proposes changes to Chapter X or 10, which is the transportation chapter. The primary thing that this amendment does is it adds text to describe things that are already listed in goals and policies in this chapter. And it also takes Map 26, which is the foots map, and replaces it with five maps that provide a variety of bicycle and pedestrian facilities that were not contemplated at the time of adoption. In addition, it adds glossary terms related to both of these changes. When you look in your packet, you're going to see pages such as this. The blue text is the additional text added to the regional plan in this proposal and blue text that is crossed through or struck through is text that is removed. And what you will see is in these three chap, these three spreads, let's call them, two pagers, we're primarily adding text. There's very little that has been removed. So the first section is quality design, which is a section that was very brief before, but we've added material on universal design, complete streets, maintenance and the, the principles of walking and biking that should be incorporated into design. Next slide. The second page set that has been updated is the pedestrian infrastructure set. It's important that this section was updated to align it with the maps that are being changed in replacement of Map 26. And I won't read this all to you, but when we get to the end, you can let me know if you have any questions. The bicycle infrastructure section has a similar treatment to the pedestrian section and it adds information particularly on low-stress infrastructure and on bikeways, which were not something covered specifically, even though there's language on bicycle infrastructure in the goals and policies that supports comfort when considering these facilities. So next slide. The next few slides, and I'm just gonna have Jeff kind of go through them somewhat quickly, but flip through them as we, as we go, is the new maps. They are existing and missing sidewalks, planned bikeways, enhanced and grade-separated crossings, existing and planned foots, which is basically an updated version of the Map 26 that is being deleted, and forest access and trailheads. You can see that this amendment adds the diversity of options and facilities that are included in the review of conformance with the regional plan. So this is the existing map. You can see it only shows the urban trail system and this map will be deleted. Next slide. The existing and missing sidewalks map is something that we've been producing at the neighborhood scale for both the Plaza Vieja and Southside Plan. And with that work Martin has done on the Active Transportation Master Plan, he has brought this to the citywide scale. This only shows sidewalks on major streets, so it does not show whether or not there are sidewalks on local streets. Bikeways were not mentioned in the, a plan that we adopted in 2014 and they are an important part of the Active Transportation Master Plan. The regional plan does not go into detail on how to design the bikeways, but merely identifies their location and generally what purposes they serve. And that is one of the ways in which the Transportation Master Plan provides more detail. Next slide. The enhanced and grade-separated crossings map, as you can see, is very extensive and provides lots of ideas for how we can move forward on having safer crossings throughout the city. This is also something that was not included or mentioned in the regional plan as it was adopted in 2014. So next slide. Just a few more maps, maps to go. This one is the urban trail system map that has been updated and includes a more accurate version of the plan system. Next slide. And then last, we have forest access and trailheads. This map in particular is tied largely to the Flagstaff Trails Initiative, which Martin, myself and many other people at the city and in our partner agencies worked on over the last few years to describe a regional trail system that serves not only Flagstaff but the entire metro plan region. So this is showing the important places within the City of Flagstaff where this access and trailhead connections can be made, which allows people to transition from federal trail systems into the foots, bikeways and other sister, infrastructure systems that the city provides. Next slide. So this plan amendment was considered necessary because as the work was being done on the ATMP, it was clear that the regional plan had much less information and there was a need to create more cohesive ideology and terminology between the two documents, but also recognition that the goals and policies of the regional plan in general supported the Active Transportation Master Plan and that amendments to those were not necessarily needed to improve the implementation of either document. Next slide. So Martin has completed all the necessary steps of the amendment process, including an IDS review in January and a complete application, a substantively complete application. The meeting at the Pedestrian and Bicycle Advisory Committee last week and tonight's meeting are considered the public review sessions. So these meet the Title 11 requirement to have a public review of the doc, of the minor plan amendment before the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. Next slide. The Planning and Zoning Commission is meeting next week on September 14th to hold the public hearing for this amendment. And currently, the, the city council is scheduled to hear this amendment on October 4th. These are the actual public hearings where the recommendations are made for a plan amendment. While the motion you just took on the Transportation Master Plan, Active Transportation Master Plan is appropriate for a master plan, you as a, as a body do not need to make a motion on the plan amendment. This is just for your review and if there are any public comments, those can be heard at this time. Next slide. And so, so there are only two findings for a minor regional plan amendment, the finding of conformance, which as we've discussed, has been made because we didn't make any edits to goals and policies. We're merely improving their implementation through clarifications and information changes. And then a consideration of community benefits. And you've already had several discussions on how considerations of emerging technology, micro-mobility, public health benefits and overall emphasis on decreasing the number of bicycle pedestrian accidents will create a greater benefit to the community on the topic of active transportation. And seeing that correlation in the regional plan will improve implementation across multiple fronts. So the Planning and Zoning. So the Planning and Zoning Commission will be hearing this case next week and the, we are, staff is recommending approval of the plan amendment. And that's it. Are there any questions?
All right, commissioners, this is an informational item only. Any questions for Sarah Decter? Vice Chair Morley?
Yeah, Sarah, I, I know for a long time, we've already Yeah, Sarah, I, I know for a long time, we've already, we've said the regional plan supports, you know, modal shift in general. I am surprised to see that there are any changes to goals and policies. And would think that if the goals and policies were already strong enough, that we'd see more of the implementation already happening. So maybe you could just talk through a little bit some of the discussion around, like why the goals and policies are already strong enough and we didn't need to make any changes to strengthen anything.
Commissioner Morley, I think the main issue with the regional plan is that it has 98 goals and 508 policies. So they can be excellently written and not prioritized at all against other goals and policies, which is really one of the biggest flaws it has in being implemented consistently and as envisioned for the city. And so that, the maps are a very strong piece that we have been using in development review discretionary cases and even in by right cases, people look to these maps. So that was considered a very strong update. While the language, improving it would not necessarily increase the prioritization of the implementation of the goals and policies we already have. When we update the regional plan, this is an item I'm creating a lot of emphasis on as I'm going out and being worked up to the community, is that without prioritization, we will end up in the situation we are in now, which is that we've had to have emergencies declared to see motion on things that really we could be prioritizing in something like the regional plan. So I'm hoping as we make this policy shift of updating the regional plan, which will be occurring over the next two and a half years, that some of those flaws will get resolved through that process.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I already did a public call, didn't I? Or did I lose track? I haven't done public call. All right. Thank you.
You did not.
Thank you, Sarah. Do we have any members of the public that would like to address the commission on this particular item? Now is the time. At least until it's in front of you. All right. Hearing, you're seeing none. All right. Thank you, Sarah. I'm making eye contact around the room here to make sure there isn't anything final. Commissioner Kraft, are you good?
In what way?
Are you okay with moving to old business?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, Sarah. Great. That ends our new business items. Old business, we have none. Concluding general business, there are reports from the BAC and PAC. You can follow those links. So 4B, informational items, two from commissioners and staff. I'll start with Jeff Baumann. Do you have any informational items for the commission?
I was going to introduce our new administrative specialist that was sitting behind me.
I thought she might have been a member of the public. And so I kept looking at her like, now's the time.
So that, her name is Dee Williams and she is jumping into minutes. So you can expect a large pile of minutes, maybe next month.
Wow.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
And I'll do the, I'll wait for section C.
Okay. Any other items? Commissioners, any items for us? Right. Moving on to 4C, the next meeting, a regular meeting held October 5th. I will not be here for that meeting, Jeff, as it turns out. Just a heads up on that. But go ahead. You had an item for 5C.
I didn't have anything in particular. Again, this is just a long list of tentative items. I will say we're making progress on the residential management program review. We'll have something for you, which will be fun to talk about as many of you have some experiences with that program now. So it'll be, it'll be good to talk about. Annual crash report is going to be done as well. So that'll come back. So those two kind of internal administrative items should be here for October. I'm not sure about any of these others. They're always just kind of placeholders at this point.
One thing I would like to cover in an upcoming agenda is the commission's responsibilities, our charter. And just going through that, making sure that we're, we have a common understanding of our responsibilities and duties as volunteers on this commission.
Yeah, thank you. That was on the agenda two meetings ago. The presentation's done, we're ready to go. So yeah, I'll bring that one back. Thanks for the reminder.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember McCarthy, do you have anything for the commission? No, you're good? All right. Vice Chair?
Oh, I just had one other potential future agenda item. In the past, we've had a CIP update, but it always feels like it comes after the CIP is decided. It'd be great if we could think about the timing so that the commission could potentially weigh in on upcoming projects and know what's planned for the next year.
What's a CIP?
Capital Improvement Program. And, just so you know, Vice Chair Morley, when we had the presentation last month, and I think you were out of state and Ann was here, I made that comment on your behalf. And I even said, if Commissioner Morley was here, she would ask that we talk about the timing of, of the Capital Improvement Program.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
In that review. You bet. Go ahead, Jeff.
That's cool. You can see the red lights. Getting ready. Yeah, we can, we can do that. It's always tricky, as you know, because we're scrambling to get it ready just in time for council. And that doesn't match up for you. But I'll put it on for October and maybe we can just talk about what we know at that point.
Fantastic. I guess I do have one more informational item. No, I don't. I'll call it a day. All right. Any final things? Otherwise, we are going to adjourn. All right. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Adjourned. Have a wonderful evening. Be safe. Thank you.